Original statement.
Okay, tonight we're doing a zoning board hearing for an application from Bowie Bertold, Paper Crane Provisions LLC for a variance or variances for their proposed business on Gardner Road. Can I have a motion to call the meeting to order?
Make the motion, we call the meeting to order.
Any second.
Any old second.
Hey, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is called to order, Mallory is gonna read her her statement about the Zoom meeting.
Alright, virtual meeting statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 2020 order to spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A subsection eighteen and the governor's March fifteenth twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This, the meaning of the Hubbardson zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and our requirement to attend can be found at www.hubbardsonma.us. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post in the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible.
Thank you. For our guest in the applicant, what we normally do is we, in our hearings is will allow the applicant to state the reason for the appeal request, any, you know, providing justification for the the zoning board request, the appeal request. Following that presentation, the board will have the ability to ask questions in clarification. When the board is done asking their questions, we open it up to the public for questions. We'll finish up with any type of, you know, any follow-up questions from the board, then we'll we'll close the public portion of this hearing. With that being said, is your name Bowie? My name's Scott, by the way, Bowie?
Yes, Bowie is my first name, just like Joey, Joey, but with a B.
Alright. So Bowie, the floor is yours, so if you want to make your presentation.
Okay, great, thank you for the introduction. Hello, everybody, my name's Bowie Bertold and I am the founder of Paper Crane Provisions LLC. It's a family-owned vertically-integrated marijuana company. And as some of you might know, we are, we just received our special permit to do an outdoor marijuana grow for this coming summer at fifty-six Gardner Road. That is under, that's underway, we're working towards commencing operations at the end of June and my original plan in coming to Hubbardston was not just to grow outdoor marijuana, but was to actually create a small, all-inclusive marijuana production facility at fifty-six Gardner Road. So that would include both indoor and outdoor cultivation, some greenhouse cultivation. I'd like to open a small marijuana dispensary and also do some of my own product manufacturing all there at fifty-six Gardner Road. I'm here before you tonight because I need a, I need zoning relief for parking, for adding parking as I sort of move towards developing towards this larger plan, so that is, that's kind of the overview of everything. I have Mallory, I think probably has the plan on her desktop of what we're looking at, and many, all of you, I'm sure have seen the plan. But to make a long story short, if you're looking at the plan of fifty-six Gardner Road of this larger development, you'll see a block of parking at the front that is within a hundred-foot setback. That is the primary reason I'm before you tonight is, I would like to put that, I believe it's one, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, a block of twenty-four parking spaces, which is just about equal to the parking lot of Pizza Palace across the street. I'd like to put that in front, in the front of the business. Now, due to the setbacks, the hundred-foot setback from the road, technically the front portion of my, of one of the pre-existing buildings there, the front corner of that building is actually eight or nine feet within the the new setback regulations. So if we were, you know, if basically it would, I think if I was going to have to make this completely compliant without any relief, I would probably have to drop that building and then begin to create my parking. From that space, it would just push everything much further back and I bought fifty-six Gardner Road intending on using those buildings. I toured them many times, I looked at them, they were kind of rundown, but I knew they were, you know, good steel buildings, so they're being fully renovated to process the outdoor marijuana cultivation this summer, so they're being spray-foamed. We're updating the bathrooms, we are adding climate control and odor remediation, we're throwing a lot into it just for this first phase this summer, so it would be very easy for us to continue with, you know, moving forward with the second special permit, this larger special permit of this larger build, if I can get some relief on that parking.
Okay. Is that it?
That's primarily it. Mallory, is Wesley here? I think I've sent him the, I sent him the wrong, the original link.
Want me to send him an email?
I just ordered.
He's trying to hop in right now.
Okay.
Damon's on the phone with him. Wesley is your engineer, correct? Oh, there he is.
He's my landscape designer.
Okay, I can't keep you all straight. There he is.
So I believe that's all the other parking that's on the plan, as in the parking on the west and east sides of the site are within the setback, so it's really just that, there's the front block of parking and then one, two, three, four spaces in the northwest corner. So I believe that's good. Wesley, do you want to add anything to that?
I just got on the call, so I'm actually not quite sure what the discussion is referencing.
Okay, we're, I was just talking about explaining to the board, basically what we were seeking relief on, which is the the front block of parking, and it's, you know, very similar in size.
That is, yes, that is correct. It's everything that is outside of the setback. Or let's see, everything, you know, everything that falls outside of the required setbacks.
Right.
And you could see the setback lines on the plans.
They're the red dotted line.
Okay, good, thank you. So how many total spaces is it?
We're requesting relief for one, two, three, four, twenty-eight spaces. Now, that sounds like, I mean, it is a lot of parking that we're looking for here, but you know, I'm, ideally, this would be parking for employees for the cultivation and manufacturing portion of the lot and then also for customers, you know, pulling off sixty-eight for the dispensary.
Okay. Questions from members of the board?
I, I just have a general question for now. I thought there were five different variances that you were looking to get. Are we just talking about one tonight, or?
Let's see here.
Fallowing onsite parking. Permit only one building per lot, open space requirements. I guess I just, I just trying to understand, are we just talking parking?
So when, this is Wes here. So when we put the proposal together, we tried to be totally comprehensive, so there are technically five items that we felt warranted at least some, a mention and a request for a variance, variance. Some of them are quite minor and may not really even meet the standard that would require a variance, but we put them anyway because we didn't want to omit anything that would hang up the the project. So I think in my view, the most important is the parking, which we're talking about now. But but I think we should very briefly address each one and just discuss the merits and the and the situation and whether or not it actually requires a variance.
Before we jump there, can one of you address the, one question that I had is, typically, we grant a variance after, after there's a denial of a building permit. Has the building inspector denied your, your building permit?
So I can answer that. Back in November, we tried to make an initial submission of a special permit for this larger site build out here, so, you know, for some greenhouses, for a manufacturing building. And right away, we ran into some DCR watershed buffer zone issues with the back portion of the lot. And we had to change the plan significantly. During that, a few weeks, we were basically trying to get our bearings on what the outer, what the outer buffer zone would sort of mean for the overall project. We figured that out. I filed for an advisory ruling from the DCR, was granted to move forward with my outdoor project. This is actually still under consideration as well. And from the DCR, for the greenhouses, not for the parking, but, so basically, in conversations with with Bill, I, he pretty much said, you know, you can't submit a plan for a special permit that requires zoning relief. You have to get the zoning relief first, so this never even like made it to Rowan, so that was kind of stopped, I was prevented more or less because of the, because of needing the zoning relief, I couldn't actually submit a special permit. So Bill told me to circle back with you guys first, and then if I could get this, then proceed with the, with the larger special permit. Does that make sense? That's, so that's what happened.
He's talking about Bill Murray from Places Associates, who was our peer engineer for the plan.
Oh, that's right.
Not Phil Holman.
I was just gonna say that.
So you were, you were granted a special permit last week, you mentioned, by the planning board. Is that for the, for the smaller portion or the whole project?
That's correct, so that's for basically a existing use project for this year and maybe next year, depending on how long it takes to do, you know, the permitting for this project that's before you. So the outdoor grow that I was granted the special permit for last Thursday is only using eight existing parking spaces that are, that's the parking lot where the customers for the stove shop used to park. So we're just putting up a fence and using the lot and everything, basically as-is, we're not really doing, building anything except the fence. So my understanding was when we get into this larger project, what Bill Murray and I and other planning board members refer to as Phase Two, you guys are looking at like the Phase Two of my, of my marijuana project here. This requires significant zoning relief because we're gonna need, you know, there will be customers, it's just a much larger situation. So Bill basically wouldn't let it pass. You know, wouldn't even make it to Rowan because they're, almost all of the customer parking was within the setback. It is a little bit of a peculiar.
And I did check with Rowan and he said that in situations like this, that does happen, doesn't always stem from a denial letter from him.
Mr. Chairman, it's not unusual sometimes when you know that you need relief to to request it without a denial. So that, what they're proposing is not, although, out of sequence for us typically, it's not unusual.
Okay, good, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Other questions?
How far back off of the road will the parking be? It's tough to tell from this. I tried to scale it, but I couldn't really scale it. Is it, is it similar to the, across the street, the Pizza Palace? Are you, are you within, you know, twenty feet? How, how close is it?
Go ahead, I actually, I did the measurement, I took a long tape measure, actually measured, so the Pizza Palace's parking lot is about sixty feet from the middle of the road. And Wes, what's, what is this one? You would have to answer that.
It's gonna take me one second to give you that, because that number's not on the plan, but I can actually measure it here.
I said, I could share my screen, I do have a good, a pretty good picture of the, the layout, if that was.
I'll make you co-host.
It is, it's sixty feet from the center of the road.
Okay.
To the, to the, to the furthest tip of the parking that, that faces the road.
Okay, oh, right, because it's at an angle, I see.
Yeah.
Is this, is this the zoning, this is, this red, what is this line?
That's correct, that's the setback, so the side setback is thirty feet and the front setback is a hundred feet.
Okay, I thought so, okay.
And what, what percentage of your operation is based around getting this zoning relief?
Well, the entire, this entire Phase Two is dependent on the zoning relief, so if I want to build anything, I basically break the pre-existing non-conforming structure code that I'm gonna be operating under this summer. And as soon as I sort of, you know, depart from just what the property is now, then that would basically mean I would have to, any, anything new I would have to do, I think that would even mean I would have to drop this front building down if I was gonna start constructing new things. I'd have to keep everything within the setback. So it would, right now, for, you know, for this plan, it would, you know, it would completely take me back to square, you know, square one. I'm, I more or less wouldn't be able to, I would have to, I would have to change, you know, things significantly, whereas I bought, I bought the site hoping, you know, planning on using those three steel buildings and then just adding to them.
Okay, I saw in your packet that it had a, let me see what page it was on, it had a parking distribution where you've got so many square feet distributed to, you know, X square, or X spaces and so many handicap accessible. Is there anything that is involved with the, I guess, this cannabis and the dispensary that might lend to needing more spaces? I mean, I know that it's, it's caused a problem in a lot of different towns and, and cities with backups and things, and is this something that Pizza Palace is gonna get upset because people are parking across the street and overflow? Has this been thought through, or?
Sure, well, definitely, I can answer to a few of those points. Number one, Tula from the Pizza Palace has been over and we've spoken and she seems to be pretty supportive of everything, we're, we're, my whole crew, we're, we eat lunch every day over there and they seem to be supportive of us. That's just an aside, but number two, the, the rush for, for cannabis to find a, you know, a marijuana dispensary is, that's, those days have kind of come and gone. There's over a hundred dispensaries in the state open right now. There's over three hundred with provisional licenses, so they're gonna be opening at a rapid clip coming up here, so you know, we're moving towards really just a liquor store model of, you know, the type of service this is gonna be. It's just a, you know, drive-in, the amount of time, the average amount of time that a person spends in a marijuana dispensary is less than three minutes. So they're in and out pretty quickly, and now almost everything is app-based. So they're checking for up-to-date menus and usually ordering on their way, so they're really just gonna be coming, parking quickly, coming in and, and leaving. I think this is gonna be a small dispensary, so probably only around eight hundred square feet or less. And three points of sale, maybe four points of sale. It's, it's really, it's not, I don't have the space and I'm not trying to build a, you know, a big elaborate flagship store that's gonna, and, you know, bring Snoop Dogg here from LA to throw a party on sixty-eight. I mean, I'm, it's, it's really just gonna be a small, on-the-go farm-to-table dispensary. I think twenty-four spaces will be totally adequate. And if it was gonna be a bigger, more elaborate dispensary, I would probably say like, yeah, we would need more spaces, but twenty-four is a good number. I think Caroline's down in Uxbridge, which is also a very small dispensary, tiny, like four hundred square feet. And she does a quick turnover business and she has about, same thing, about twenty-two, twenty spaces. It's, I, I don't think it's gonna, I don't think we'll need more.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions.
Right, the floor is yours.
All right. In, in your document, we're just talking about parking. You had a table in there that had thirty-six required under the bylaw and you're proposing forty-five. Is there a reason you're asking for those, or you're proposing those additional stalls? Was that to deal with any potential overflow? Or what was your thought process on, on having, providing more than, than the bylaw required?
So if I'm not mistaken, and Wes, you might want to chime in here, so in terms of the usage of what is required for the different businesses that are gonna be here, so like the, if you go to the, look to the back of the site, to the south side, those greenhouses, that, that has sort of a non, a non-specific usage, I believe, in the, in the table. The, and then the commercial sort of more manufacturing stuff, there, there wasn't, I don't believe there, there, we could, we were able to come up with something from the bylaw that specifically said how many there were. Wesley, am I right about that?
I think there were some guidelines that, that based on the industrial use, I believe, that, that called for a specific number of spaces per the amount of square foot that we had. And I, but I, I'm afraid to say that I don't recall exactly what that was at this moment, but I can look for it right now, but I think, so I don't know exactly where the number came from.
Okay, I mean, the only reason I was asking it was, had something to do with your operations, so naturally, you're gonna have more employees with your greenhouse facility, which typically aren't included in a, in a table. If you really felt you needed, had that need for that many spaces, so obviously don't want to be an impact to your neighbor.
For employee spacing, I was looking for between twenty and twenty-four spaces and then everything else. And that's at maximum build, so that's when we're totally built out, when we're, we're growing in the greenhouse, we're manufacturing in the new building and we're, you know, we have a staff in the, in the small dispensary. And, you know, so to speak, when we're fully vertically integrated, I'm expecting between twenty and twenty-four employees that, that, so everything else would just be customer.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Nope, that's fine, yeah. My, my next question had to do with utilities for the site. You don't show where your septic system is and you've got two wells next to each other, one right on an island and one in the parking area, presumably one of those is leaving or you're gonna drill a new well.
Correct, so the, the septic site would be directly under that, under the new proposed block of twenty-four spaces. We did a perk test there. And the engineer from Boeblick Engineering who did this, that was, that was the site where I believe the existing tank is now. So that's the general idea, and then, yeah, I think we would probably have to relocate that well. So fill it and find, you know, maybe another, another well, you know, dig another well somewhere else, but again, it was, so the, the septic system is, is directly under that parking area in the northeast corner of the, of the zone, of the site. And that's where the existing septic is now.
Where was ground, do you, I know you're an engineer, do you recall where groundwater was located?
I, I do not, I mean, I have the perk test and I can send it to you, yeah.
I just, that might impact your, the grading of your site substantially. Okay, the, the other question I had is, looks like you're staggering your greenhouse to stay outside of that watershed protection district. Are you trying to meet a specific impervious area or?
Correct.
What behind that?
Correct, so you, you are able to build, you know, by right, more or less, as far as the DCR is concerned, on ten percent of the, of the, whatever portion of the outer four-hundred-foot buffer is on your property. So that's what we came up with, that sweep is a lot to the ten percent of the watershed there.
Okay.
Hi, this is Wes here, I do have an answer for the parking requirement if you're interested.
Sure.
It's true that thirty-six spaces, we ran some numbers on the various uses and there were three spaces per each thousand square feet of gross leasable area for the commercial use of the dispensary, which is about two thousand square feet, so that's how we came up with six spaces. And then it was one space per each five hundred square foot of gross floor area for a manufacturing use. And there's approximately fifteen thousand square feet of manufacturing and that ends up with thirty spaces, so that's, that's the, how we derived the thirty-six count. It's true that forty-five is obviously nine additional spaces over the thirty-six, so part of why we chose to do that was for the reasons that are, are coming up now, is that we weren't sure whether or not there would be a need for additional and we figured we would ask for those which fit well into the geometry and layout of the plan, so you can see that we loaded the front parking lot and the two side parking lots essentially to, to the extent possible while keeping the landscape islands and buffers healthy and present.
The only other comment that I had, and I don't know if, if this is more of a planning board issue, but you have twenty-foot-wide aisles or perpendicular parking stalls. Do you feel that's sufficient for maneuvering a vehicle in and out?
We do.
Okay. Is the fire department reviewed access around the building? Is probably your site plan reviewed?
No, not yet, so we were, I mean, it should be compliant. You know, we paid attention to that, but we weren't, we were never able to get to the site plan, you know, the site plan review is more or less part of a special permit and we were not able to proceed until until we addressed the. Un- until we address the the relief.
Right. And certainly, if the fire department requested a a additional aisle space, we would be more than happy to accommodate.
Are you, are you trying to do two-way traffic through this or is there an opportunity for one way? With some angle parking and reduce the the depth you're going into the front yard setback.
I think it would be possible to do one way. And I believe that was the, um, that's the intention that it functions primarily one way, although it's possible that it goes both ways.
Yeah, I I guess we could make that designation for sure.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have an entry, I mean, we notate on the plan entrance only sign on the entrance, uh, that is on the lower portion of the site. Mm-hmm. Exit only sign on the upper portion. So the assumption is that, so if that you you, you would always exit out of the upper driveway and enter in the lower driveway. Which means, I mean, it has various implications in each of the, if of the three parking zones.
Yeah, you're you're fixed on your south side and your north side.
Yes.
Uh, because you're, you've got, I mean, as as an operation, I'm assuming you have some pretty strict stringent entry areas.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why I was asking is, you know, to trying to see if there's ways that. They can maybe either through the reduction of parking, particularly if you're looking at this page in the lower left-hand side, they're only like six feet off of the street line. Not the pavement line, the 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 street line itself. Um, and it it is pretty constrained. But if they looked at traffic patterns or talked to the the fire department or or how they wanted to get in and out of the site. You know, if you angled the parking, you save a little bit if they reduce their parking needs. And they're giving abundant parking based on their anticipated use. Um, you could take some of that closeness of that parking lot away from the street line. It was just my thought process. I don't know what other members of the board thought about or. What the feelings are on that, but another one is, uh, I think it's in the zoning by law though, but you know, using compact car spaces. Um, typically have a a reduced depth. Requirement. I I don't know if that's, if there's an allowance in the Hubbard's zoning by law for that, but.
Yeah, we we use the what was required in the Hubbard's zoning by law, which are nine, I believe they're nine foot widths and twenty foot lengths for your parking zone.
Yep.
And I don't know, but we mentioned it before I got on the call, but but I I think, I don't know if you you see the uh, the the whole parking lot is a uh. Porous, you know, green, green hybrid, um, where you park on what I would call paved tracks. And then the the undercarriage of your cars over a porous area. Which could actually even be maintained as long.
No, I didn't, uh, what was that?
There's a photograph of it in the um, in the application, um, write up. Page seven of twelve of the ZBA variance letter.
Okay.
You guys see that?
Yeah, we can.
Have you, have you installed that at a site, another site somewhere? Is that, is that a photo taken from a New England site?
No, it's not a New England site. Um, and we have installed similar, not not, um. Not exactly this system, but we've installed tracks for parking numerous times and had ground covers in green area where the car wheels don't fall. Numerous times.
Okay. Does it, does it last in the winter?
Yes, so the, what you do is you, you keep the pavement elevation, uh, proud of the. Turf elevation so that the plows skim over it.
Interesting, okay. Um, and then you feel you have adequate space for drainage in the back of the site, presuming that's where you're going to put it. You got a couple of recharge whales at the. Eastside.
It this, the 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 level of detail is conceptual at this point in time. But we feel that there is adequate. Area for, for, you know, a a a hybrid system. We do think that there's going to need to be some, some structured drainage. And and honestly, this is out of our area of expertise. We have, you know, at this state in the, uh, just for the ZBA requirement, we we. We didn't do that analysis. But the, um, the idea would be to do a dual system where some of the drainage was handled, uh, in the swales and above ground. Um, as we indicated, and some of the drainage would be handled underground.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Chairman, that's, thank you, um, gentlemen. That was all I have for questions right now.
All right, um, Bill or Al, you have questions? We can.
Oh, yeah, I just have one question. I believe there's a retaining pond, uh, on property. And uh, owned by in a butter in the back corner. Has any consideration um, been given as to how runoff either from the plant watering or the car? Snow removal during the winter might affect that retaining pond, because that retaining pond. Filters in to bring them pond, which then filters into the Ware River watershed.
Yep, I I can answer that. So I actually have an advisory ruling, um, filed right now. Currently, I'm requesting from the DCR. For this conceptual version of this plan. Um, they gave me a green light for the, you know, just for the outdoor portion of this. Um, I'm doing an all organic grow. It's similar going to, similarly, it's going to be all organic inside. So I'm not doing hydroponics. I'm doing basically living soils, um, indoors, under lights. There's very little runoff. Um, your water usage is is minor. I'm also going to be doing water collection for my dehumidifiers from my roofs. Capturing everything, using, treating everything I can. Um, it's going to be very, this is not a typical, um, you know, high demand hydroponic farm at all. Just, I'm just, in case anybody was wondering, because a lot of people, especially if you, you know, are reading. Uh, publications, looking at pictures of a lot of the new state of the art grow facilities, it, they look like, um, science slabs. You know, um, this will be clean, modern, but still going back to, um, just traditional organic living soil gardening techniques. So the runoff is very little, um, almost zero, as a matter of fact. Um, when you're growing in soil and generally, uh, moisture is your enemy. So, um, whereas. A hydroponic system is, you're, you have very extensive flooding and drainage and capture. Uh, contraptions that are, you know, pumping ten, fifteen, twenty thousand gallons a day through recirculatory systems. So on and so forth, not happening in this establishment. Uh, we're basically filling felt pots and large prefabricated, um, basically indoor raised garden beds. And watering them with a wand, um, once the soil is properly mixed and amended and packed full of worms. So, um, I don't know if that answers anything, just in terms of, I can't speak to the, obviously, the runoff of the parking. The engineers would handle that. I have, uh, Goddard Wetland Consulting contracted to do all the stormwater drainage plan and when we get to that phase. So all that will be taken into the, you know, the greatest of consideration and no expense spared to make sure that Tom Bracco's pond. Is not polluted and Tom and I have been, um, uh, in constant contact. About making sure that surrounding a butter properties are closely considered and everything.
Uh, if I may just one last question, please, um. When you refer to what we were, the information we were provided. The design, et cetera, is as the whole thing being conceptual. Do you mean that what we see, what we vote on could be altered at a later time? Is that what, I'm wondering what your, what in your mind, the use of the word conceptual references?
Sure. Yes, I mean, so I understand, you know, I'm I'm not here to necessarily look for a vote. I'm here to start to start this conversation. Um, so correct, if you say. The board, the the Board of Appeals was, uh, open to this parking plan that we're requesting. Um, before I can have the full engineering of this site done, I have to know. That I'm at least going to be in the ballpark here. So yes, the plan is always subject to change from my special permit that I just. Um, finally got last Thursday, I think there were. Eight, eight changes in terms of fence length. Um, just little things here and there. So yes, this is the, I guess, I, and again. I wasn't able to submit something and then receive a negative, you know, determination, um, since so much of the parking for what we want to do. And the reason we want to build this is because we are trying to add on to the existing buildings. So we wouldn't have, be having this conversation if I was just going to say, all right, we're just going to build a, you know, a whole brand new thing. So, you know, we're. We're trying to use the buildings that are there, which I want, that I want to keep. And then I'm currently pouring a ton of money into. Just to bring up to snuff for, um, you know, the phase one, the outdoor portion this summer of the grow. So yes, I I totally understand, um, sort of, it is a strange situation where. Uh, yeah, this plan could change. For example, the DCR, I've 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 applied for this advisory ruling here. Um, to more or less, you know, construct this road back into the watershed and build this portion of my greenhouses. Inside that watershed, which would equal my ten percent allowed by right portion of the non-permeable. Buffer zone. However, for some reason, they could come back and say, no, like, I'm sorry, we we actually. It's you're disturbing the site more than we would like you to because of the retention pond. And we actually want you to reduce the size of that greenhouse. Well, if I, so yes, like, the plan is going to change. It's probably going to change more than once or twice. So I know this sounds strange, but I guess this is sort of, um. I guess I'm trying to see if we're in the ballpark, so to speak.
Right. If if I may add a little bit, when we, when we set out to design something like this, um. You know, it's it's a string of pearls or hopefully pearls and we, we do our very best, you know, and that's why we we sort of very specifically mentioned. The five elements that we're asking for variances for, um, parking being one of the larger ones. And in order to ask for those, we need to see how the whole. Uh, set of conditions fits together. So we do our very best to do a, a, a very reasonable and, you know, well-designed. Uh, collection of all the elements, just in order to determine how many parking spaces we needed to ask for, just to determine, you know. What sort of building setback relief is necessary, et cetera, et cetera. So. Subject to change, but we do our absolute best to get it as close as possible and to adhere to as many of the. Uh, zoning restrictions and guidelines and, you know, what I would just call good common sense design. Building etiquette to to get it right.
Thank you for your response.
Any other questions, Bill Homans?
I'm all set at this time, Scott. Thank you.
Okay.
Just to, just to reiterate, I mean, what you're asking tonight is, is zoning relief on the parking lot. You're not talking about zoning relief for the, for the building as well, are you?
Yes, they're connected. So let's put it this way, if if I were, if you guys said, no, we we we. You guys are going to build a, build some greenhouses and build a new manufacturing building and build all this stuff. Too bad, knock down the front of that building, that that yellow steel building at fifty six Gardner Road, um, and. Or even knock down the front two buildings and you are just going to have to make your. Parking compliant, you know, within the new setbacks. So, um, there, in my, again, I'm not an engineer. You know, or a lawyer, so I'm not sure, but they seem pretty connected to me. So if we were in order to be granted the parking, I believe we would also have to be able. We would also be at the same time being granted the variance for that dotted red line. That's going over the corner of the front building, that nine feet of my front building.
Right, I can walk through the, um, the five points that we, we, we noted. It's on page three of twelve of the ZBA variance letter, if you would like. Just to under- better understand the nature of each request that we've, we're putting forward here.
Yeah, Wesley, why don't you go over those?
Okay, is it possible to share the screen of page three of twelve? Of the, um, uh, or I think it's page three of thirty three in the, in the, in the buying package we sent over.
This page three?
That's it. Bottom of that page is is, um.
Did you see that? Okay, yeah.
It's hard to see for me, but, um.
Make it a little bigger. Just, it's jumping, it's doing some weird thing.
Okay, that's great. There can be my glasses for this one. So, so, uh, the first, the first element is, uh. Is onsite parking requirements, which we've talked up about extensively. And then what we're doing is seeking, um. Relief for creating parking spaces within the hundred foot front yard setback area. And. Um, I think we've got, you know, we've gone through the numbers there and and it's pretty clear on the plan that some of the spots are are within the setback and some are not. So we're asking for relief for for all those spaces which are not. Um, the next part is about grandfathering and that is about the, the nine foot portion of the frontmost building. That sits in the setback. So there's a very narrow sliver of a triangle. I think it's fifty two square feet. Of one of the three buildings that are existing on site that is within the setback. So technically, if any. Um, I mean, it's a little unclear in the zoning, uh, um. But theoretically, if any change is made to any of the buildings or any improvements or additions. Then the entire group of buildings needs to be compliant. And because it seems ridiculous to knock down the whole building for fifty two square feet or cut off the front triangle of that building. We are asking for relief to keep that fifty two square feet in and be allowed to do whatever additional future changes. Will be part of this project, which includes renovating all the buildings and building the greenhouses and building other processing. And, um, a manufacturing areas. So that's number two. Um, and then number three is a a zoning regulation. Which requires that there's one building per lot. So what's interesting here is actually at this point in time. Uh, there are three separate buildings. I would, I would argue that two of them are actual buildings and one of them is an agricultural structure. Which may or not be qualified as a building, but even then, they're two separate standalone buildings, uh, which theoretically do not. Um, comply with the Hubbard's zoning criteria of one building per lot, but it's pre-existing, so. So it is what it is. Um, and then in terms of what this future condition will be. We are actually linking all the buildings with a new structure, so it will end up being one building. So that becomes less of an issue. Once they all get put together. However, if you look very carefully at the design, we do have a slight separation. I mean, it's only feet of the greenhouses from the existing structures because it's impractical to join them. Although we do have some, some, you know, breezeway, walkway connections, so they. Although we do have some some, you know, breezeway, walkway connections, so they, I guess technically they are joined, but they're not. Absolutely contiguous along the entire run of the building. And then the open space requirement requires that land included with all setback requirements shall be maintained as is in the case of commercial uses. So in this case, the 30 foot setback is being used for circulation. So we have roads that connect. To the parking and then move into the fire road into the access road in the back. That are within the 30 foot side yard setback. So we are asking for relief to have a road within the setback. In that section. And then section 5.3C is about the loading area. Loading areas are required in commercial uses while not specifically designated. So again, it's a little bit of a gray area. And what we're doing, because the need for loading is minimal. Um, we've designed the facility to have a single loading bay. And to make it slightly less, you know, less space consuming. Because its use doesn't warrant that for what Bowie is is and paper crane is is. Is going to require. So there's still a full loading bay, but it's a single bay rather than. Uh, more. So those are the five areas that we identified as specifically or potentially needing relief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Scott, Bill Holman's, I just listened to everything going on here. Is this more? I think the way Bowie's been presenting this, I think it's the information to get to the board. Take it under consideration. Do we or would we grant the variance on? Each section of this or the whole thing? Cause I've never done one in this aspect that we've never done unless we had a letter from the building inspector denying what they wanted to do.
I would think we would want to. Do a variance on each of the each of the five. I'm not, I I wouldn't even know. Constructive areas covering all five.
And I agree with you. I think it's one each its own structure and it's all variants.
Uh, just just a I'm thinking out loud and out of the box here, I mean, perhaps it would be possible to ask the building inspector to review it and ask for some guidance.
Well, you know, he, the building inspector could say, you know. There's precedent set with other business that is not being set back a hundred feet. You know, and he could grant the building permit under those circumstances. I I don't really know Roland as. You know, as well as his predecessor.
So since it's a special permit, I I I do not believe. With as a special permit, it has to the zoning relief. I was, I'm just sure of it that Bill. Directed me to you guys, sorry, Bill Murray from Place Associates. He specifically said, you need to put this to the planning board for, I mean, to the zoning board first. Because it's a special permit.
Scott, could we? Contact the Billy Inspector's office and schedule another meeting and do this just. Because I don't think we know which way to go with this. Unless you wanted to just have us vote on each issue. But I think I think the Boeing Inspector's office really should give us a determination first.
Yeah, I I I don't, I really don't want to take it all into one.
No.
You know, I think, you know, the the parking is is one entire issue. The 30 foot sec side setbacks isn't it is different. You know, in my mind, I agree, the loading area was kind of a minor, minor little thing. But, you know, I I I'm looking, I'm just thinking about, you know, the neighborhood itself as well, and yet. You know, the. You know, there's, you know, a time and a place business that's just down the road and their parking in their building is. Definitely not 100 feet off the road. John's Auto is no different. Country Trail is no different. Then further up, Rieta Rieta's parking is right on 68. So I I think it's precedent in in other businesses and along that along that road. But I I think we definitely need to discuss this a little bit more, just to. Make sure we kind of flesh everything out.
But Scott, the other thing I think of looking at this and discussing it is the fact that it was also an existing business using the same footprint.
Yeah.
I would I would also add that we did our very best to use landscaping. Again, they're conceptual and but but, you know, I'm sure they'll translate into the final plan in some. Uh, graceful way, but we use landscaping to really try to conceal all of the. Public views into the parking and to minimize the impact of the parking on the general public and on the abutting properties. With screening, with new plants, with wildflower meadows, there's a lot of, if you look into the landscape plan. There's a lot of effort that was made and and this was actually noted. In this, in the special permit that Bowie just received, they they seem to appreciate the landscape plan and and it has a lot, it shares a lot of. We we designed the two so that they sort of work interchangeably. This, that's phase one, and that will seamlessly transition into phase two. So. All the plants that get put in. Now, for what was just approved will will remain in place and be only slightly modified to. To to fit into this plan.
All right, any other questions from the the board members?
I I do have one question. This special permit that was just granted, was that from the planning board or what was that?
Correct.
Yeah, so it was from Planning Board, Gil.
Thank you.
So all all marijuana businesses are granted by, you know, business licenses are granted by special permit only.
Correct.
So what what specifically is that special permit for?
Is it so that that sure? Yep, sure. So that special permit is, it's for basically what we are calling phase one. So. It's if you're familiar with the property on the 17th, you're gonna see. Got Gerard put a fence up around the whole thing from about midway back from the front building all the way around with a gate through the parking area. We are going to grow a tier six outdoor marijuana cultivation. Site, we're, you know, we're gonna do a tier six grow this summer on the site. And the special permit is good for three years. And, you know, my anticipation or my original intention was not to. Come here and put up a big fence and just grow marijuana in the backfield. My intention was to come here. And sort of use this commercial lot as a more or less a like a micro brewery model. Of a marijuana company. So sort of like a large marijuana micro business, we call it, you know, vertically integrated. So. A site where we're going to be growing in greenhouses, maybe growing a little bit in the backfield, growing in the existing buildings. And building a little more steel wedge core building and then also using the stove shop. Or, you know, locating a small dispensary, like I said, so that was the original plan. We made an attempt in the in November to start moving toward that special permit. And just the the engineering was not right. We were actually, my engineers missed the. DCR 400 foot buffer from the watershed buffer zone that is the dotted line, the black dotted line on the property. My engineers actually missed that altogether on the gift map. So. That just sort of drastically altered everything in interest of not missing the season. You know, just kind of burning money, going through plans here, and everybody's anxious to get some revenue going from these projects and just, you know, sort of move into the future with cannabis. We, Ryan and I spoke and we decided to try and do the outdoor grow, which now we're calling just phase one. So this is really what I would like to do. This is more hiring, more jobs, more of a complete picture of. Cultivation, manufacturing products, probably a small infusion kitchen as well. And then a farm to table store. So this is like my dream. And the outdoor cultivation special permit is what we were able to execute right now, so the years don't start ticking by while we hammer out this bigger plan.
Got it. Thank you.
Right, right. And as I mentioned before, they've been designed so that they they seamlessly transition from one to the next. Just to save. Uh, site work and development costs.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I mean, what I've gathered, they itemized some variances that there, they believe that they need to acquire. And go through the site plan interview and special permit process with the planning board. They were asking us for some feedback. To them, I don't think they're looking for a vote or an answer tonight. Is that correct, Mr.?
Correct. Like I said, this is really just to start the conversation. I mean, I would love for you guys to say, hey, go ahead and build it. And I will, but or I will try and I'll start the engineering, but you know, just just for example, I mean, you know, as soon as we start the engineering for the site, all of you know, I mean, you know. But the the piles of money start being lit on fire. So we just want to know that we're gonna be headed in the right direction. So I think it's a great idea if we want to maybe set up another meeting, you know, preferably sooner than later. I know like. You know, just to give you guys an example, if if I wanted to even get close to executing this next year. Once we decide like, okay, this parking will work and yes, you know, oh, I also. Sorry, not to change course here, but I I do want to mention to the zoning board that I do have a host community agreement. From Hubbardston for the retail store for the product manufacturing as well. So those do not need to be sought, they are held, we have them. So those are already, those have been signed, sealed and delivered. So if. We can figure out this parking thing, I can snap this plan. I don't need to then begin to ask permission from the town. That's already been done in terms of can I have a pot shop here? Can I manufacture products here? Could I grow some indoor cultivation here? The answer has already been yes, those contracts have been signed. Back in May of 2020. So once we can figure out this parking thing, then I more or less unleash the hounds, which is Goddard Consulting. Then we get into stormwater drainage, we get into the advisory ruling from the DCR for the outer watershed buffer zone. We really actually start to put the money into the engineering for the site, but I at least know. You know, if I'm going to engineer the stormwater plan to the tune of, you know, more than $10,000. For, you know, a block of parking in the front that I am actually having that engineered for something I can accomplish. So it is kind of strange. It's like conceptual, like we are having sort of a conceptual discussion here, but. Again, since it was a special permit, it was directed to you guys instead of the the building inspector, but I think we should have Roland in. If he can weigh in, so decisions can be made, that's great. He was just involved with my special permit, so he's familiar with what I'm trying to do here.
Andy, did you want to say more?
No, I just, I just think that, you know, if, I mean. There was some concern amongst a couple of members of granting relief. I I think given, looking at the site design. You know, if if the board doesn't feel comfortable granting relief on the on the parking area, they've got a drastic redesign and probably should execute it sooner than later. Or, you know, Scott, like you mentioned, and I just spent a little bit of time going up and down the street. Measuring on the Oliver tool. And there isn't a parking lot that's more than 100 feet away from the street line, let alone the pavement. Within half a mile of this place. And 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 lastly, and this is just my, my opinion or feeling is, you know, we're supposed to grant variances. Going to the land, topography or otherwise, there are some constraints out here, one being the watershed protection district that does limit the amount of impervious area they can use. And and secondly, you know, I'd be interested to see what the soil testing results were out there. It is a very tight soil area with probably shallow depths of groundwater, and it's why it grows apple trees so lovely. That they're going to have some constraints with regard to the soil conditions. And the only thing I I just ask of the applicant, and this is the. It's the the juncture of the board is just take a look at that parking, is there something they can do to kind of. Jockey it a little bit farther away from the edge of the road. It's quite a bit of relief to go to six feet in the corner. I was just looking up the ADA code, you know, they they've got one extra handicap stall. In the parking area. If their total is 45 spaces. So I don't know if that was, again, a special need that they were considering, because the ADA is just a minimum, it's not a. You you can put more if you'd like to. So is there any other way? And I've never done this before, but I I seem to think we overpark. Overbuild parking areas sometimes, and this is just a personal opinion. But I'm okay if you cut some of those parking spaces out and said, look, we put the trees like Mr. Worth. Said we we storyboarded all of the stuff and if they finally have a nuisance condition or they need more parking. All the infrastructure of the site is there to expand it.
One quick correction, minor correction, I believe that. It the the furthermost parking lot is about nine feet from the property line and 28 feet from the edge of the road. And 60 feet to the center of the road.
Uh, my, all right, I my mistake, I.
Yeah, something like that. So so.
Seven feet, but regardless, it's pretty close.
Yeah, it's close, it's close to the property line, but it I believe it it's from the edge of the road is about 30 feet, you know, 28 feet or so, exactly where where are you have your cursor there now on the screen. And then to center where the where the G is of Gardner Road is 60 feet to that corner of the parking lot.
Yeah, we we always deal with the street line. Otherwise, we end up with post offices putting signs in the right way.
Understood.
It still exists, by the way.
Yes, it does.
Well, that was my my thought, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of things to look at, I'm sure, and I don't want the flavor of the rest of the board is.
Well, maybe we should, I mean, is there a desire to bring or a need to bring Roland in? I mean, I would just like to, you know, if. Everybody wants to sort of, now that we've talked, start, you know, thinking about this and sort of looking at the plan. Wesley and I are available, you know, 56 Gardner Road, 01452 is the website. Has all the detailed information on phase one, the outdoor growth that's going. Has all the detailed information of phase one, the outdoor growth that's going on. I mean, you know, we can answer questions and, you know, set up another meeting and, you know, continue to just hash it out. Unless there's any, I mean. Any, let me know.
I mean, that, what, I mean, but tonight, you, I mean, this is kind of a. Two-part question is, you know, tonight. You know, ideally, you'd like to see something unpacking if that was at all possible. Then the other four variances could be subject to. Something in the future. Um, or, you know, if, if the board. Wants more information and more time to think about this. Um, you know, we can go that route as well.
Um, I, could I just make a couple of quick observations? I mean, my, my sense is of. First, I want to just talk globally about the way I understood this when I got into the, right, you know, writing the proposal that we're reading tonight. And what, and one is it felt like each of these five points. Um, of each of the five points, we were just really trying to be meticulous about. Making sure that nothing was left on, you know, un, unattended to. And I think that many of them are. Quite minor and will have many checks and balances as, as the project moves forward into the future. So I would, I would think about, you know, the, the relevant, um, the importance of each one. As it relates to uh, the community and to, you know, to all the reasons that this exists, there, that a variance exists. And um. And I, I do think that the parking by far is, is, is the most relevant to the impact that it will have on, on the community. Secondly, in terms of tweaking the design of the parking. If we were, for example, to, and I've done lots of this sort of stuff, uh. You know, throw this back on the drawing board and try to. Engineer angled parking and let's say we, we took out four spaces, you know, and obviously we would, we would. It, it, initiate the process by taking out the four closest to the street. And then run some angle, you know, we could, we could potentially improve the condition maybe by ten or fifteen percent, you know, again, that, that, you know, just to. It, you know, it would back up, it would make what was now twenty-eight feet from the street, maybe thirty-two feet from the street, maybe thirty-five, maybe even forty feet from the street. But the question I would ask, if it's well landscaped and it has, it's full of wildflowers and. And nice trees, it's, you know, what sort of, it, you know, it will be an incremental improvement, but it may not be. A earth shattering or, or, you know, a, a, an improvement that. Would, will, will really be necessary. And I guess that, that's the sort of thing that I would consider as I, as I was sort of going through the process of, 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 you know. Gauging the relevance of each of these tweaks.
And I should note, we, we, we did want to start interrupt you, Wes, but we, you know, the, the. Board member who mentioned, you know, is this going to be enough parking? That should be taken into consideration here. So we've had. Um, you know, we had a traffic survey done and I also found an old traffic survey for the business. So right now. Um, we're looking at about between fifty-two to fifty-four hundred cars a day during the pandemic are, are passing this. This business, pre-pandemic, it was up around seventy-two hundred. So um, I think. You know, it is a busy road and we are going to be a, um. We're going to be a well-known company, um, and this is going to be a sought-after brand of cannabis. So I don't think there's any downside to having a little bit of extra parking, just so we don't have. I don't think we're gonna have traffic backup on sixty-eight with people trying to get here, get in here to buy cannabis, but. You know, um, everybody knows, like, when the flea market is going on. There's tons of bikers riding around. That road is busy. I mean, on Sunday afternoon, that road is really, really busy. Um, so, you know, a little bit of extra parking just never hurts.
Scott, Bill Holmans.
Yep.
I think in fairness to the board and to Bowie and all those folks that he brings along with him. I would feel better to have something from the building inspector saying that what he will and will not approve. And that way we can move this forward so they can start their business. Which is what their intention is. They've been through many, many, many meetings with the planning board for this whole process. And, and I would like to see that we can maybe move this forward quickly if we're going to approve it to. For the parking and all these other things, because the building inspector might waive the fact of the. All the other. Issues they brought up because it was an existing bu- business prior to this.
That's exactly correct. And, and as I said, you know, more than once, we brought it up just because we didn't want to leave any stone unturned, but we, we think that some are definitely. Of minor relevance.
Okay, well, um. If, if that's the. Desire of the board. Our next step would be to close the public portion of the hearing. Um, with a continuation. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, you, you, you can't. We shouldn't close the hearing. If we're going to accept more evidence.
Yep, exactly.
We can continue. Um, I don't know if we're on a. If we're approaching a. A time constraint with the applicant, if we need to grant, if they need to grant us a, um. An extension or not. I don't, I don't know when that, I think it's ninety days is up from when they submitted. Um, I don't, Mallory, I don't know if she has that.
We're still good for time. We just have to be careful. Um, with the upcoming elections and candidates tonight and stuff like that, but we should be good if we continue on Monday nights. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, Scott Bell Holmes, can I make a motion that we vote to continue the meeting?
Sure. You, you want to make that a formal motion?
I sure do.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Should, should we just ask them some things of what we want to see when they come back next time? A little hit list.
Sure.
As part of that continuation.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, so the. To amend that motion, the, the first one would be discussion with the building inspector with respect to. The other four items listed in their application. On, on what action by the board will be necessary. Here, Mallory, furiously typing. You all set?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know about the rest of the board, my, my quick question about just taking a look at the parking to see if there's any other way to. Take a look at that geometry. And if they come back and say, no, we spent a little time and this is, we feel is the best flow, that, that's an answer. The other item on my list was taking a look at the soil results and um. I know you talked about the septic. Well, we, but did they do soil testing in the drainage area as well?
Um, in the drainage area, so down.
In the back of the property? Have you done any more soil testing?
No, well, I've done, I did, I did soil, pretty comprehensive soil testing from the whole entire site in three um, zones. So I basically, you know, I, I marked it off into three zones, rear, middle and front. And took, you know, forty plugs from each one and sent them off. I have those results, the, the, since that actually. I don't think it was um, ever really used heavily for agriculture, because it is, the soil is, is almost, it's a little phosphorus deficient. But that's it. It's actually, it's pretty nice black topsoil. I, we all know the clay is underneath there. But there, there was no contamination. In terms of drainage, I could just give you the, um, the perk test from where we perked.
Yeah, so the, the testing you did was specific to agricultural use, like what are you going to need for amendments and whatnot for your growing operation?
Right.
Um, I, I was more specific to um. To the drainage. Of the site and the ability to support a septic system.
Okay, so if I have the perk results, would that be it?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Some engineers, when, when you're going out to dig for a, a perk test in the front, you'd go, say, all right, we're going to dig a perk, we're going to do a couple of deep hole evaluations in the back where we think we're going to put drainage or recharge infrastructure. I don't know if that had been done or not.
Um, we didn't, we didn't perk in the south side of the lot, we, because we were just, we weren't planning, I'm planning on using that. And um, you know, the septic, we were basically going to replace the, was the existing septic system.
Yeah. Alright, you're out there with a backhoe, you may want to have your engineer go out, but it's not critical for this, this particular application. Uh, you send over what you do have. You, you don't need to go out on, on our behalf, or at least in my opinion, our behalf to, to do extra excavation.
Okay. No problem.
Those were the three items I, I thought that they could come back with to keep our dialogue being constructive. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any, any other requests from the, the board?
The only other concern that um, Al had was, was particular in how, how they were. And maybe he's addressed it to Al's satisfaction. Was managing the, the fertilizers and nutrients running off the site.
Sure. So we're, uh, for, well, for this year in particular, um, we're not, I'm, I'm really just amending the existing soil with. Al, aged alpaca compost and aged cow manure. That's it. Um, I actually grew up on an organic farm in South Florida, so I'm, uh, you know, I'm kind of a, like I said, a living soil farmer. Um, I'm not using any salt-based nutrient solutions um, later into flowering, and this is just pertaining to the outdoor grow in particular. Later in flower, I'm using some compost teas, like no salt-based um, full spectrum, so to speak. Um, fertilizers are going to be used, and I, I don't actually believe in it. In terms of what's happening um, inside, like if you're referring to. How we're going to be growing in these greenhouses. Those are radiant slabs and we're building, you know, cedar box beds right on the slab and we're going to have living soil right there. The runoff is almost zero. We will have some drains, obviously going to capture systems, but um. The, I'm, you know, again, there's, this is not, I'm not doing hydroponics or, or. A high-demand, high-turnover uh, water, you know, watering aquaculture, so to speak. But the engineers can get all, into all that down the road in terms of, I know you're more concerned probably with stormwater drainage and so on and so forth, but in terms of. Um, like what is going to be coming from my cultivation areas on this site, I am fully operational. Nothing, um, you know, nothing that's going to. No non-organic stuff. More or less. Sure.
Anything else from the board? Hearing none, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Wait, I have one more question. Sorry. When, when, when should we, when can the next meeting be? Will we decide that now?
Mallory, what, we, we have some, we'll have to publish the, the dates of the meeting, so we have some.
Post it on the website forty-eight hours in advance. Um, it doesn't need to be republificized in the paper. Um, so if we want to continue in the spirit of Mondays, um, I don't know if we want to give it two weeks, the twenty-fourth to thirty-first is the following Monday, but that's a holiday.
How long do you think we need to, to get an answer back from the building inspector, Mallory?
I think he understands the urgency, so. I don't know if we'd be good for the seventeenth, but I would feel comfortable for the twenty-fourth. Is that okay with you, Bowie?
That's fine. That gives me some time to get this stuff together as well.
Okay. I, I believe I'm good on that date as well.
I'm all set, Scott, for that night.
I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Wesley, are you good for that?
Yes, I do have a quick question though regarding the uh, interface with the building inspector. Are we taking it to him or are you taking it to him, meaning the, the ZBA?
Yeah, we're going to take it to him.
Yeah, I work for the building department too, so I can take it over.
Yeah, and, and if there's any need to overlap or, you know, for explanation, we're happy to, to jump in.
All right.
And Roland's about to get, you know, all my special permit stuff on his desk probably in the next week, so he's going to be, he's going to be seeing. References to the project a lot here for the next couple of months.
All right, good, thank you.
We just need to have a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all those in favor of continuing the meeting until the twenty-fourth, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing you again in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Be well, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have to close our meeting.
Yeah, I suppose we, we should close. We've closed them. We, well, we haven't, we opened the public hearing and then we continued it. We didn't open a, a regular scheduled meeting.
And make a motion, we open up our regular meeting of the ZVA.
Second.
Uh, favor. Hey, our regular scheduled meeting is now open.
Stop sharing.
I got some.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wesley.
You're welcome. Nice to spend the evening with you all.
We know he's lying.
It wasn't.
It, it's always interesting. Um, is there something that you wanted to talk about tonight, Bill?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I'm all set. I just, I didn't know if we had to go back and do our regular meeting.
Well, I just have one quick unexpected. Um, the selectmen are toying around with the idea of um, hybrid meetings right now. So they're actually trying out their first one where the board is able to meet in person, um, and any applicants or members of the public can attend over Zoom. Um, so that's something to keep in mind. I know it's convenient for a lot of us to meet on Zoom, but if there was ever. Um, a time that you felt would be more appropriate to meet in person, that is an option, as long as it goes smooth tonight, which I haven't heard anything back yet.
So for, for our purposes, is, is everyone on the board vaccinated now?
I am. I am. No.
Bill's halfway though, aren't you, Bill?
Right. I'm waiting for the second shot.
Yeah, so you would need this two weeks after the second shot to be considered vaccinated.
But, you know, if we're, we're in masks, it really shouldn't matter.
So I'm interested to see, I heard a couple of people who are watching the, the meetings that they're having a hard time hearing from home. So I don't know if that's something they need to work out or whatnot, but it's an option.
I'm sorry, it's the first night and first Zoom meeting I've had with the town, that I didn't have to put headphones on and my actual service isn't cutting out all night. I was using the video a lot too, but I can actually hear it tonight.
That's good. So something to think of. That's all. That's all I got.
We don't have any meeting minutes or anything we got to approve?
So they hired someone to do the meeting minutes. I haven't gotten them back yet from the last meeting. I'm breaking on them, so if I don't have them, I told her by next week, then I'll just take over my minutes again. Um, it was kind of to ease up my responsibilities, because I do board of health, building, planning, zoning, conservation. My goodness. I do, I think, six or seven different departments. So, um. The process, but I haven't gotten a lot of mine back yet, so I've been doing them at night. But. I told her if I don't have them by next weekend, they're online again. So we'll have some for the next meeting.
How many Zoom meetings a week are you doing?
Between two and four.
God bless.
Yeah, I'm all right.
But that's life now, isn't it?
It's crazy.
Yeah.
It's nuts, but. Zooms aren't too bad. You don't know if I have pants on or not. I have to wear pants in the office.
Before we adjourn, I have a procedural question that I would like to address to the chairman.
Go ahead, Al.
Please, thank you. When the packet was initially delivered to us and provided to us, I got the impression, and please, everybody correct me if I'm wrong, or specifically you, Mr. Chairman, that they were coming to this board.
Did we lose them?
Somewhat aware of things that have been changed or allowed by the planning board. But I'm not, I'm not knowledgeable about what the planning board did.
Al, Bill Homans, we only heard a portion of what you said, you cut out during the first body of your statement.
Yeah, but they, the planning board never provided us anything, did they?
The planning board just voted on Thursday. We don't have a copy of the rough draft yet.
Oh, okay. There is the the option as well, because I I saw this the other night, Al, myself is the the planning board's meeting is now on YouTube, isn't it?
Yes, the planning board granted them the the first permit they need for operation. This is actually, I believe, the second part of their operation.
So so Al, so Al, to go a little bit further with that is initially, one of my concerns is we're not stepping on the toes of the of the planning board because they have certain rights of for what they approve, and we have certain rights, and I I just didn't want to you know, step on their toes and do something that creates some type of conflict. So I agree with you that, you know, perhaps better communication between the boards in in this process especially is important.
The planning board knew about this variance. The fact that they didn't get a denial from the building inspector's office, I think, really ended this whole process. But they were saying that they were notified by Mr. Murray under the Places Associates to do it this way. The planning board was not notified that I know of to of all these different variances they were looking for.
Yeah, the the my concern was that whatever, and this is not to degrade the work of the people on the planning board. But my concern was that whatever decisions they had arisen, whatever communication had taken place between the applicant and the board, that their, the planning board's decision or decisions would have made this meeting moot and unnecessary. And thereby thereby avoiding any conflict of, oh, planning board says, okay, zoning board of appeal says no, or vice versa.
So what Bowie presented tonight was phase two of the project. The planning board has only seen phase one so far. And in working with Bill Murray with the planning board.
You're gone.
Yeah, you cut out.
You cut out. You there? No.
Sorry. I lost connection.
You got it.
All right, so so what Damon presented tonight was phase two. The planning board hasn't seen anything on phase two yet. What they voted on was only phase one. So in working with Bill Murray from Places Associates, I'm looking at the future for phase two, I think this is, Bill gave him the heads up that that he would need to come here before the planning board can work on his site plan, which will be part of his phase two package, which is probably why there hasn't been too much communication, because the planning board hasn't seen this yet.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, it's, this whole process is just so there's been a lot of hiccups.
And there's been a lot of
Gave him a permit for phase one, not knowing anything about.
They gave him a permit for the the outdoor operation. It's
Yeah.
What did they give it? They gave him the permit to operate, I think, until the host agreement compact or however it's called, is up expired. Oh, Bill's gone. He was the only other one there.
They haven't seen any of this that we looked at.
Haven't even started deliberations on this as far as the planning board goes. They just have started with the phase one, the outdoor grow operation only.
It seems a little, I don't know.
Makes sense. Would it make sense to have a joint meeting with the planning board?
Yeah.
Invite the chair to the next meeting?
I it it might, it's in the reason I say that, Mallory, is a number of years ago, there was a signed by law variance that came up. In the end result was the planning board sued the zoning board over their decision.
Wow, okay.
And in the in the end, it was a total misunderstanding, but
Of course. A nightmare.
Yeah, there was some, and we ended up having a joint meeting to to clear it up.
Yeah.
The more communication we can have, the better, I think.
Sure. So do you want me just to invite Alice to the next meeting, or do you want me to work? I can request over email a joint meeting with both of them. I don't know how you want to do it.
Let's invite Alice to the meeting.
Okay.
Because in, you know, if she wants to, you know, sit down and talk to, you know, Bill or I, or anyone ahead of time, that's, you know, just to make sure we're we're coordinating, because there's, I mean, they have, have they gone to Conservation Commission as well?
Yeah, Concom, they did an RDA. And they determined a negative determination, so they didn't need to go any further for what was presented for phase one of their project.
Okay.
So that's what we're gonna have to keep remembering is that we're in phases, and so we're only approving for that specific phase instead of what's to come down the road, which is like a nightmare.
I apologize for my ignorance, but what's an RDA?
A request for determination. So they went to the planning board and asked if the planning board would require a notice of intent be filed for the proposed project of phase one, and the Conservation Commission decided that negative, they don't need one to file an NOI. Notice of intent.
So so Al, what what can happen is if you if you don't believe that an activity requires action by the Conservation Commission with a notice of intent, you can file an RDA. And when they issue a negative determination, the conservation says, look at that proposed activity is not will not warrant or require a a notice of intent. So a real simple one is you're fixing your septic system and you're within a hundred feet of a wetland. You're allowed by the code to file an RDA, and they can issue a negative determination because it's considered under Title V to be, you know, treat the wastewater appropriately. There's there's other examples of that, but that's, you know, a real easy one to follow.
Thank you, Andy.
Scott or Mallory, one one thing we could do is the the planning board should have received a copy of the ZBA application, right?
Yeah.
You know, we could just follow up with a quick communication saying, we 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 continue to the next hearing, and we haven't received any communications from the planning board. Did you have any comments on what they were requesting?
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
And I think they meet on the twentieth, so they can meet as a board on it, too. So I'll get that over to all of them.
Yeah, I mean, I I know some people's concerns about having different things, but I, with all these boards, I call it the go ask your mother syndrome.
I like that.
You end up, you know, you you, we have responsibilities aboard to answer applications in front of us, not make a contingent on some other board to act.
Right.
And if people want to do it in pieces, that's their prerogative, and sometimes there's a very rational reason for it. If we told these guys that they were not granting a hundred-foot parking variance, they got a lot of work to do, and they could have spent, he is not joking, you could have spent tens of thousands of dollars on engineering to scrap it all in a matter of a night. So there is a good reason for sometimes that strategy. Going to probably your most restrictive board and then going back out.
With the most restrictive board?
Not not in personality.
So what are you trying to say?
We got the big, we've got the big hammer of all the boards, right?
Can we just, can we discuss this applicant one quick moment?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, great. It it seems like from my years in Ludlow and then here, any applicant that came to us on either board had definitive plans that that they were going to do, whether it was put in addition on a house, put up a shed, move a shed, et cetera. But this applicant seems to be uncertain as to where the next step he's going. Am I overreacting, or am I just sensing some, I don't know, you know?
Al, I I think what he's doing, he's trying to save himself some money and time by what Andy said, to try and get things approved without spending all the engineering costs. So if we're not, if we're gonna deny him the variance on the parking and all these other issues, I don't believe he he wants to spend the ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars on engineering and go in the wrong direction. I think that's what I'm hearing.
But if not, but but by not knowing, but by not knowing how big, like a shed you're gonna put up next to the property line, or or how close it's gonna be, and you decide, well, you know, this is contingent, and you decide, well, I moved it five extra feet closer. And I mean, that seems what the guy seems to be saying, just like, well, I could do this, but my my original thought is this, but I'm uncertain if that is even right, so therefore I could do anything.
I think what he's looking for, Al, they sent the plans to Bill Murray, who does, he runs Places Associates, and they do all the review for the town for the zoning and the laws, and explain everything to the board, so the board knows what they're talking about, just like the building inspector could come to the to us and talk about what they couldn't couldn't do. Mr. Murray is the one that told them to come to the ZBA and apply for a variance for these different issues that they thought were gonna arise. That's what I'm taking out of all of us. And Mr. Murray comes to all the planning board meetings and it and explains all these things, too.
And I think the other issue from what I, you know, I I agree with you, Al, it seems, even from the point of view is, you know, they they checked off the box and granted variance for a denial of building permit, and they don't even have a building permit yet. So it seems a little bit different, but you know, they're they're juggling, you know, the the changes that the DCI may put, give them, and Concom and planning board and us. So I think they're juggling a lot of different things, and if if we say, no, you need to cut back your parking by, you know, fourteen spaces to to get it, you know, at least fifteen feet off the road, say, you know, that may change what, you know, the next step when they go to the the planning board. So when I think they say conceptual, I, you know, I I it might be the wrong word, but I I think it's, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in this that we almost have to take, you know, one step at a time, you know, and, you know, if we we grant them a variance that says, you know, you're, your parking needs to be fifteen feet off the road, you know, they may be able to adjust it up to that point, but they can't go beyond of, you know, what our restrictions are. So I I think we're protected somewhat from that. And, you know, I'm not sure what, you know, anyone else thinks about that.
You, Scott, I I agree, we could, we could write, so the the first part is, I I know that you look at the notes on the sheets, they did do a real boundary survey. So it's it's not some applicants come in, they're using some either old data or or minimal data. And this room for error with respect to the boundary line, and then secondly, like I said, we could write it and say, look, your your relief is so many feet off the street line. If you can't make it work, you're gonna have to open your permit again to make it work. So I I think they probably chose their words, maybe not as carefully as they should have with respect to that, to give us the also the audience, the implication that it was very conceptual in design. I mean, they do have hired professionals to put the plan together. And granted, some of the relief they sought may or may not even be required. I think I agree that they're trying to belt suspenders themselves because you don't want to miss miss one little line of the zoning and then get your building permit kicked out, and now you're ninety days out from getting a permit again. So that would worse, where Ron's input may be helpful, make sure that we they do, in fact, be relieved for those other sections.
For me, I I just sense that I had the sense that we were holding this applicant to a different standard than we hold, you know, my next door neighbor or your next door neighbor, Joe Average Citizen, because we want to see secure plans of what they're gonna do, and then we modify, we, the board modifies or changes together with the applicant, whereas these guys give us the plan and tell us right in front that they're not sure what it's gonna be, look like. I I was just trying to make sure that we were looking at it equally from from, you know, Joe Citizen to this company who's wants to do this right away.
Yeah, I, you know, I hear you, you know, at the same, but also, this is the, this is their first time, I think, I've seen a zoning variance request for something in the commercial district, so this is, I think this is new to all of us because we have so little real business in town.
Yeah. I mean, he did say that this is his ultimate goal, this plan. So he he's going for the gold, right? I would think that he's probably expecting some kind of pushback. That's why he's starting with us.
I believe that's what they said in the, when they were, he was giving.
You know, and I I kind of almost feel like almost feel like it's a little sneaky. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Exactly.
I take it that he's putting everything on the plan he wants to have that he feels he can try and get.
Right.
Spaces and all of that.
Harder for us.
Then he has to redo it.
Yeah, because now it's like, well, money, money. I mean, is that his hardship, right? I mean, I
Think potentially, there's a lot of hardships. That's, I don't, if I had to, if I wanted to do a growing facility, I'm not sure that I would have picked that spot personally.
Yeah.
That has a lot of constraints.
And and you guys said, someone said, there's a facility going up across the street potentially as well.
They're they're
Really?
Working on that now also, same time.
Same people or?
Different, different applicant.
Well. Hubbardston.
And to be like Pittsburgh.
Anyway.
All right, folks, I got a scoop.
Okay, do we, we need to close the meeting to have a motion to close?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor? See you in two weeks. Thank you, everyone.